We're live on our website.
Did y'all see that Eddie Van Halen died today?
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
Yes.
Sixty-five years old.
That was hard to believe, too, that he was sixty-five.
I thought you said sixty-three.
Well, I thought it was sixty-five, too.
It's just.
He was. He's Jimmy's age.
Yeah, right.
Jump.
Mr. Henshaw, have you guys on Facebook yet?
Oh, they just changed their, what their site looks like a little bit here. Stand by. Okay, we are live on Facebook.
Wonderful. Give me just a minute to share it, and I will begin the meeting. Hey, good evening, everyone. It's actually six oh three. We're late getting started tonight. But I'd like to welcome you all to the October sixth, twenty-twenty Meeting of the Gallatin City Council. We have the disclaimer or the disclosure that we have to read at the beginning and have the council vote on so that we can hold this meeting electronically. So I'm going to read this, and then I will entertain a motion from the council. This says pursuant to Governor Lee's Executive Orders Number sixteen, Number thirty-four, Number fifty-one, and Number sixty. There's another, is there another one since then, Ms. High McCauley? She may be muted, but regardless, I know that those cover it, and one other may as well. And the need to limit the community spread of COVID nineteen. The October sixth, twenty-twenty Gallatin City Council meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the council and the citizens of Gallatin. You can watch the livestream on Cable Channel nineteen, which is Comcast, on our website at gallatantn.gov, or on Facebook. You can join the Zoom meeting at, can we put that up there where people can see it? I'm only seeing the PDF symbol, Mr. Henshaw. I'd like people to be able to see the link. I'll go ahead and read.
Sorry about that.
It's HTTPS coins forward slash forward slash US zero-two web dot zoom dot US forward slash day forward slash eight four one eight three five three six four six nine. There it is for you right there. That's the link that you would go to if you want to join the Zoom meeting. And you want to join the Zoom meeting if you want to comment on anything that is on the agenda, or make any other kind of public comment, or participate in the public hearings that are being held tonight. You can also go to our website, which is gallatantn.gov, and you'll be able to click on the Zoom meeting link there that will also get you into the meeting. Alternatively, you can call to participate in the Zoom meeting. You may do that through these phone numbers. One is four seven zero three eight one two five five two, or four seven zero two five zero nine three five eight. The webinar ID, if you're calling in, is eight four one eight three five three six four six nine. So that's the information on joining the meetings tonight. At this time, I will entertain a motion from the council to continue and hold this meeting electronically.
Most approve.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. With that, I'll ask Ms. Kitchell to call the roll to take the vote.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, we have seven i's, zero nays.
Thank you. With the unanimous approval of the council, we will move forward with conducting this meeting electronically. We'll begin tonight like we do all of our meetings with invocation. And like we do most of our meetings, we're going to have Councilman John Alexander pray for us. If you would, a bow, please.
Yes, let it in our heart pray. In turn, I pray to God, once again, we come with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you, dear Lord, for the city of Gallatin, and all our first responders, and all those who kept taking care of our city. I pray, oh God, that you will bless each council member tonight, that everything we say and do will be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' name I do pray, near our hearts and amen.
Amen.
Okay, now, Ms. Kitchell, if you would officially call the roll for the record, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Councilman Alexander.
Present.
Councilman Fann.
Here.
Councilman Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Next item is the approval of the minutes, and we have the minutes from the September first, twenty-twenty City Council meeting, and the September fifteenth.
Hello.
Motion by Councilman Alexander to approve them, a second by Councilman Overton. Is there anyone who has any corrections or additions to the minutes? Ms. Love, I'm looking at you. I guess not. Okay. With that, Ms. Kitchell, if you would call the roll for the approval of both sets of minutes, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, seven i's, zero nays.
Thank you so much. Now, we will go to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where people may speak to any issue that is on the evening's agenda. This is a comment period. It's not question-answer period. It's so that you can share your concerns, your thoughts, related to anything on the evening's agenda. I will remind you that there are three public hearings on tonight's agenda. One is on the Greensboro Village HUD, one is on the Noble Parks Townhomes, and one is on the annexation on Hartsfield Pike. So if you wish to speak to any of those items, you may wish to wait until under those public hearings to do that. But otherwise, you're welcome to speak at this time. Mr. Henshaw will be going through those who are in attendance virtually and on the telephone. He will either call out the last numbers of your telephone, or he will identify you. There is a raise-your-hand function. If you'd like to speak, we ask that you raise your hand. And then, Mr. Henshaw, I'll let you give further discussions, because I forget, I think it's, I don't remember what it is, if you're on the telephone, how to raise your hand. But I will turn it over to you now for a public comment.
Very good, Mayor. If you're on a desktop, you'll mouse over the bottom of your screen, and you'll see the raise-your-hand function. We don't have any callers by phone, but if we have someone who joins us, you use star six to toggle your mute and star nine to raise your hand.
And you do have to unmute yourself once you are called upon, just as a reminder.
That's correct. I'm standing by. I don't see anyone that's raised their hand just yet. So it doesn't appear anyone that's online right now would like to speak.
Okay, well, very good. With that, we will close public recognition on agenda-related items, and we will move on to Mayor's comments. My only comments this evening are, I do want to compliment those who worked hard this past weekend on the Main Street Festival, the volunteers who participated. Certainly, our city employees who helped prepare for it and who helped man the festival on Saturday, particularly on the police department side and the public work side, because they were busy picking up trash. It was a good crowd. I think people were respectful of each other's space. But I think it was certainly some of the most beautiful weather we've seen in a day that people certainly enjoyed. And I hope that the people who were here participating as vendors had very successful days. And I hope that our downtown businesses had some good success on this day, too. And we look forward to future festivals with less restrictions. That does give me a good opportunity to remind everyone that we still have COVID among us. We still have positive cases daily, and everyone still needs to be very, very cautious and take precautions so that they are not subjecting themselves or those they love or care about who may be more susceptible or more susceptible to poorer outcomes to the virus. So let's, you know, continue to practice those things that we've learned that help control the spread, and be careful, considerate, and courteous of others. Finally, I'd like to mention that Channel Two, WKRN in Nashville, has been giving Gallatin some positive attention lately, which we always appreciate. They are talking about our growth, but largely, at Tom and Job's front, last week, they did a great story about us. And then tonight, we've had two stories air. One was at four, and one was at five. And I'm certain that you'll be able to find one version of, one version online at least, but that's WKRN, Channel Two, here in Nashville. When I'm looking for a story, I usually go to either their Facebook page or website and Google Gallatin. So thanks to them for telling our story up here. It's always nice when we get some attention from media out outside of Nashville. With that, I'll close Mayor's comments. I'll move now to the agenda. And the first item on the agenda this evening is that public hearing. It's on ordinance number oh-two-zero-zero-nine dash forty-one. I'm going to recognize Councilman Hayes to introduce this.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee. Rezoning portions of two lots and portions of two parcels totaling approximately ten point zero-two-plus-or-minus acres of the Greensboro Village PUD, less right-of-way of Greensboro Drive and Greenlee Boulevard from the R-six high-density residential district to the MRO, PUD, multiple residential and office-planned unit development district, located east and west of Greensboro Drive, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances and providing for separability and providing for an effective date. All right, this is a public hearing.
And the public hearing is now open. If anyone wishes to speak, the directions will be the same as they were for public recognition on the agenda-related items. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Henshaw to see if he has anyone who would like to speak to this.
Okay, just waiting to see if anyone would like to raise their hand. Just as a reminder, mouse over the bottom of your screen. You'll see a raise-your-hand button. We've got one caller, but that's Parks and Recreation. I don't see anyone wanting to speak.
Okay, with no indication that anyone is wishing to speak, we will close public hearing on the ordinance oh-two-zero-zero-nine dash forty-one. Item number two is public hearing on ordinance oh-two-zero-zero-nine dash forty-two, and Vice Mayor Camp is recognized. Vice Mayor Camp, did you hear me?
Can you hear me?
I can tell you.
I'm having computer issues. Y'all are plum off the screen, but I can read it, yeah. This is a public hearing ordinance number zero-two zero-zero-nine dash four-two. An order of the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, approving a master development plan for Noble Park Townhome on two parcels, tax map one-twenty-six, group C, parcel oh-two-six and parcel oh-two-seventh, only two-point-six-five-plus-or-minus acres, located on North Colesbury Road and West of Airport Road. Authorizing the vision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting orders, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date, public hearing.
Okay, the public hearing is now open on ordinance oh-two-zero-zero-nine dash forty-two, and Mr. Henshaw, I'll let you take it from here.
Very good. Don't see anyone raising their hand. Just another reminder, if you'd like to speak, please use the raise-your-hand function at the bottom of your screen. Simply mouse over the bottom of your screen, you'll see that, or on the app. We don't have any phone callers right now, so I don't see anyone willing to speak.
Nor do I. No one indicating they wish to speak, so we will declare a public hearing on ordinance oh-two-zero-zero-nine dash forty-two closed. Item three is public hearing on resolution number R-two-zero-zero-nine dash fifty-one, and Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, annexing a twelve-point-nine-one-plus-or-minus acres of Hartsfield Pike Right-of-Way, located adjacent to the current city limits from Airport Road to west of Hartsfield Lane, private, authorizing the annexed right-of-way to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, authorizing assignment of annexed area to a council district, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
Okay, public hearing on resolution R-two-zero-zero-nine dash fifty-one is now open. Mr. Henshaw, you can find out if anyone would like to speak in this public hearing.
Okay, we'll just give someone just a few minutes if they'd like to speak. Oh, I have a few minutes, I mean, a few seconds here. Remember to use the raise-your-hand function. And still no takers, Mayor.
All right, thank you. With that, public hearing on resolution R-two-zero-zero-nine dash fifty-one is closed. We will move to item number four on the agenda, and we are about to have the Chuck Stewart and Susan High McCauley show, because we have several dangerous building complaints and show cause hearings to conduct. So we're going to begin with the first one, which is hearing on five-eleven Blye Street, and I will turn it at this time over to Ms. High McCauley.
Yes, good evening, council. We do have several hearings tonight for dangerous buildings. And I will let you know that my office sent out notices for all of these. I've only, since we sent out the notices, had contact with one of the owners or anyone interested in those properties, and we will get to that later on. But I just want to remind you that I will be giving now information as to how we got notice out to all of these individuals and/or heirs, because several of the owners are deceased. And you are to listen to testimony from Mr. Stewart to determine if the building you believe is deemed unfit and dangerous, unfit for human occupation. And if it, if you find that the testimony was sufficient for that, then what you're going to have to do is to issue written findings of fact and authorize an order based on those findings. And you must command the owner to either repair, vacate, or demolish the building. And you need to allow some time for the repair or demolition to prevent the acquiring of a lien against the land. So we're going to start with five-eleven Blye Avenue, and this is Luther Brooks' property. And my office determined that it believes that Mr. Brooks is deceased, based on the information that we have. We did send out the notice for the show cause hearing by regular mail and certified mail. That mail was returned to us because that building is vacant. We then published the complaint in the Gallatin News on September seventeenth and September twenty-fourth, and we have not had contact from anyone with interest in that property as of today. So I'm going to now let Mr. Stewart speak and tell you about the building and list the reasons why he has deemed that it's dangerous and unfit for human occupation or use.
Thank you, Mrs. Susan. Mayor, council, tonight I have Kevin Black, the inspector, with me. Kevin's a combo inspector in our department. He does mechanical, plumbing, building, electrical. And he is the one that's been dealing with our blighted properties. So if you have any questions about any of these, he's here to answer any question. Five-eleven Blye Street, we find the building is unsafe, unsecured, and unsanitary. There's a rubber accumulation of traction and other assorted paraphernalia there. The sitting joists, the roof raptors, the roof deck is broken and water damaged. Doors and windows broken and water damaged. The porch roof has collapsed. This house is continuing to deteriorate even since we've put it on our list out there. Our recommendation on this piece of property is to demolish.
Mr. Henshaw, can you ask and tell again if there is anyone that's on Zoom that would like to speak? We need to give them an opportunity to be heard. So this is anyone interested in five-eleven Blye Avenue with the listed owner as Luther Brooks.
Okay. Right now, we don't have any callers, but anyone who would like to speak on this issue, please use the raise-your-hand function. And that'd be at the bottom of your screen. Just click that, and we'll get you, we'll open your mic. Just let me know if you would like to speak. Okay, we don't have anyone raising their hand.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion. We declare this a dangerous building. Give them two weeks to start the process to fix it, and if it's not, then we tear the building down.
I don't want to interfere with your motion, but I don't know that that, Ms. High McCauley, what have we typically done? Do we just typically give them like a thirty, sixty, ninety day to remedy it? And that way, it's either done or it's not, but as far as.
Two weeks, don't we, Susan?
I believe in the, in the past, we've given thirty days.
Right.
Sometimes more, depending on the individual circumstance. But I mean, you're, you can do whatever you deem appropriate.
You know, a lot of times, the homeowner would come and request some time if they have any idea about fixing it up. But apparently, no one is.
Yeah, no one's doing that. That's why I said two weeks. This one might as well get it over with. If somebody comes forward, wants to do it, I'll give them all the time they need to get it tore down. But on this one, I don't see them coming forward, so I don't.
I'll second Jimmy's motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Hayes. Is there any further discussion you wish to have?
You can tell. It looks dangerous from the picture, but it's interesting that it's a hundred and twenty years old.
Good lumber back in them days.
You remember when that house was built, John?
No, sir, I do not. Thank you.
Deal it in. Anyone else wish to discuss this property before you vote on the motion? Okay, Ms. Kitchell, if you would call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, seven i's, zero nays.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number five is dangerous building complaint and show cause hearing at seven-fifty-six East Main Street. Ms. High McCauley.
Yes, seven-fifty-six East Main Street. We did send the complaint by regular and certified mail, and we were notified that it was, the certified mail was just picked up today. Now, this property is a little different, because we do know that there are some heirs out there, and there is someone who's been appointed by the court to administer this estate. It is an attorney, Tina Vincent. My office has been in touch with Ms. Vincent. It was my understanding that she was going to be contacting Mr. Stewart, but I don't believe that that has occurred by today's date. So we did send it by regular and certified mail, and we also published it in the Gallatin News on September seventeenth and the twenty-fourth. And so again, I'm going to turn this over now to Mr. Stewart to give you testimony as to the conclusions of his office.
Thank you, Ms. Susan. Seven-fifty-six East Main is a little different than the others that we seem to have. Is that this house has had other complaints prior to it becoming a dangerous building. And Jessica Jackson, who is the property maintenance officer for the PD, is online tonight and can answer some questions or can fill you in on some of the blanks here. But the house had a fire in the basement, which burnt the floor joists. Our concern now is that that is the main support for that structure out there. And it has no electric power at the house. There's unsafe electrical wiring now that has been burned in the fire and broken water damage ceiling joists from the fire department going out to take care of the fire there. And, but there's other issues with, with the property, other than just the house being in this state, in this condition. Our fear is that people keep going into it, and the floor joists are burned as they are. That's the main support of that house. If it fell, and you were in that place, you'd be in a bad news situation right there. But if you'd like for Ms. Jackson, she is on, online, and she can, she'd answer any questions she might have. Our recommendation for this house is also demo.
All right. I'll make a motion. We declare it a dangerous building and give them thirty days to come forward. If not, start the process.
I stuck with that thirty days.
Have a motion to give the property owners thirty days to, I guess, you're saying to demolish or remedy the situation?
Or come forward to us and let us know that they are trying to do something.
Yeah.
Is that sufficient, Ms. High McCauley? I mean, do we need to define that?
Well, if you're giving them thirty days to come forward, then they've got thirty days to come forward, and then you're going to have to give them, I suppose, additional time to make repairs. I do know that there have been some people that are interested in purchasing this property.
Well, then, then how should I word my motion? Just thirty days, and then if, I mean, I thought that's what we did on the last one.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
Um, we gave the, the last one, we gave them two weeks to demolish it, because.
Okay, well, then I'll give them thirty days, and then we demolish it. I'll change my motion.
So you're saying thirty days demolition?
Yeah.
But if someone's interested, well, I guess if they came forward within that time and said, hey, we don't want to demolish it, we want to fix it, this council would consider that, is that?
Correct. Yeah, they, and that happens a lot, so yeah, yeah.
Okay, Councilman Alexander, are you?
Yes, I second that.
We have motion and second for thirty days. And is there any discussion? And I will say, Ms., I know that Ms. Jackson has dealt with issues of this property for some time. I don't know that it's going to do any good for you guys to hear additional details.
Yeah, we're good.
About the discord. But the fire has, you know, certainly intensified the circumstances there and also given us a path to be able to remedy it, remedy it, remedy the situation there permanently. So if anyone has any further discussion, please go ahead.
I'm a little bit concerned, because I have heard that people are going in and out of that building. And according to what Chuck told us, that's, it's in danger of falling in on those people.
Well, I, I assume that it's posted to stay out. How do we?
It is posted to stay out, but from what I hear, that's not keeping the people out of it.
That, that's correct. The house is posted, but it doesn't seem to slow people down if they want to go into one. That's why I was saying this one's a little different. And I'd like to say something back to what Mr. Hayes said there. Normally, what happens on one like this is if they come to us with a plan, and, and we issue a permit during that timeframe, we do the repairs and try to make the house safe, and then we're okay with that.
I think that's what I must agree to, Chuck. I mean, if they come to you and want to work, want to do something, work with you, then we're willing to work with them. But we need to get rid of it if they're not going to do nothing to it.
Do they have to prove that you're financially able to repair the house?
No.
If, if anyone should go in there, Mayor, the city wouldn't be liable, would it? It'd be the homeowners?
No, I don't, I don't think we'd be liable, but we still don't want anybody to be injured. I don't know. I guess we could ask that our police department patrol it and, you know, try and keep an eye out for people
on the property, but I don't know what they can do beyond that. I mean, if we have it posted to keep out, and that it's dangerous, and people continue to enter at their own risk, we can.
I mean, it's, it's no different than what we've done in the past. I mean, they're all like that, so.
People still go in these abandoned houses.
People still go in them. I mean, the first one we did, they can still go in it if they want to, and you saw the pictures on that one.
And Mayor, I do want Mr. Henshaw to confirm that there's no one on Zoom that wants to speak with regards to ownership of seven-fifty-six East Main Street, either Ms. Vincent or any of the heirs.
Okay, now's the time for, if you will use the raise-your-hand function, simply mouse over the bottom of your screen and hit that button if you're on the app. We don't have anyone on the phone.
And I. I think I know everyone that's on the call, so.
Yeah, we've had the same group, so we don't have anyone indicating they'd like to speak.
For the record, we always have to go back and, and ensure that that's correct.
Yes, that's fine. Okay, any further discussion before we vote on the motion to give the owners of seven-fifty-six East Main Street thirty days? Ms. Kitchell, would you please call the roll for the vote?
Vice Mayor. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell. Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, seven i's, zero nays.
Moving now to item number six, which is another dangerous building at five forty-eight Magnolia Street, Ms. High McCauley.
Yes, five forty-eight Magnolia Street is also a little bit different, because since the time that we did start this process, this property has old. So there are now new owners, and Mr. Stewart and I are trying to contact the new owners. Mr. Stewart, what is your recommendation on this property?
My recommendation is to defer this for thirty days to allow us time to reach the new owners.
Okay, defer for thirty days.
I have a motion to defer it for thirty days by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander. Any conversation? Ms. Kitchell, if you would call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell. Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Thank you. Item seven is dangerous building at 408 Carson Street. Ms. Haum McCauley.
Yes, 408 Carson Street. The current owner that we have listed is Ruby Vaughn. It's our understanding that Ms. Vaughn is deceased. We sent regular and certified letters to the address. They were returned because the property is vacant. We did publish September 17th and September 24th in the Gallatin News. To date, we've not had anyone come forward, any heirs or any other party that's interested in this property. So I'm now going to turn it over to Mr. Stewart to give you testimony and for him to give his recommendation on this property.
This property falls under the same conditions as most on the list tonight. There's no running water, there's no working bathroom, the ceilings are falling in. The exterior of this one is starting to fail. This house was first tagged in 2012 by the previous building official. So here we are eight years later with the same structure there, and we recommend demolition.
Any timeframe?
I recommend two weeks.
I make a motion too.
Second.
Okay, we do need for someone to make a motion that it be deemed a dangerous building unfit for human occupation.
I make a motion for it be deemed as a dangerous building.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Alexander that it is a dangerous building unfit for human occupation and giving the property owner two weeks to demolish. Seconded by Councilman Hayes. Is there any discussion? And Mr. Hinchell, I want you to also check and see if there's anyone on the line who may wish to comment.
Okay, checking to see if anyone will raise their hand and speak on this issue. As I said before, just please raise your hand using that button on your screen. And don't appear to have anyone who'd like to speak.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question, Mayor.
Okay.
If this has been deemed a dangerous building, that law, are the taxes paid up on this building?
I don't know the status of the taxes.
I believe it is on the delinquent property tax list.
Or will it be going up for tax sales?
Yes, we're working with the county attorney on the delinquent list. And so if you deem this a dangerous building and we do demolish this in two weeks, then that we would add that on as a lien to that property.
Okay. Our notes here say that this has been designated in 2009.
It's probably been scheduled for a tax sale for some time, but it just hasn't gotten there yet.
Well, part of the problem with some of these properties, to sell them, we need to have good, clean title. And when the people are deceased and we don't have heirs, there's a problem in the sale.
All right, well, item eight is our final dangerous building of the evening, and this is 219 Driver's Lane. Ms. Haum McCauley.
Did we vote on that one?
No.
We did not. We didn't get there. I'm so sorry. Ms. Kitchell, if you would call the roll to vote.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander. Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell. Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Now the final dangerous building of the evening. It's 219 Driver's Lane. Ms. Haum McCauley.
Yes, 219 Driver's Lane is owned by Mr. William Hill. Mr. Stewart and I did receive a call about 15 minutes before this meeting from Mr. Hill. Who indicated that he is attempting to cure the deficiency. He is still living in the home. And that he's trying to, he said he's made some progress. He's trying to make other progress. And I will, we did mail by regular mail and certified mail. And we did publish for this property as well, September 17th and 24th in the Gallatin News. And obviously, Mr. Hill did get that complaint because he did call our office. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Chuck Stewart and let him give you an update and his recommendation on this property.
After speaking with Mr. Hill, this is a double wide on Driver's Lane that has no running water, no bathroom. The ceiling is got holes in it. The deck railings are missing, the ducts unsecure, and they're unsanitary condition with rubbish there. After speaking with the owner this afternoon, he thought that the deck and the plumbing was all he needed to worry about. But I offered to have an inspector come out and meet him on site to point out some of the other issues. We have not been inside this structure. It was locked. So to get inside and see what those conditions are. But I would recommend that we give Mr. Hill 30 days to, and I told him this in our conversation, that we would ask for 30 days for him to get a plan in action and start bringing the home up to living condition. Because at this point, he's living there and it's not living conditions.
Motion to defer for 30 days.
Second.
They were going to defer it for 30 days? Is that what you were saying, Mr. Stewart? Or you were saying we're going to give him 30 days to?
My recommendation would be demo the building, but I told him that we would try to work with him. He'd have 30 days before that demo order took place.
Isn't this guy living? Didn't y'all say he's living in the house?
But there are. There are photos. Mr. Stewart, you said you haven't been in this property, but there are actually photos in the packet of the interior. And. And I don't know. I mean, I hate that someone's living here, but it is obviously unfit for occupation.
What I'm saying is I haven't been in since he decided he was going to do something with it.
Oh, okay.
You know, explain that well enough. But, you know, talking to him, he is an old veteran. I think he needs some help other than just, he has no transportation. And so I think I could reach out to someone to maybe get him some help out of VA. They're not going to rebuild his place, but maybe they could help him in other ways. So I said, and I told him, I said, we were going to ask for a demo on the structure. We'd like to give you 30 days to see if you can come up with a plan.
Mr. Stewart, can you hear?
Mayor. James Fenton here, Economic Development.
Okay.
I have. I have people that will help this man. We have businesses that are moving into the community that are owned by folks that are out of the service. And I'm guessing that we can help this man. I would ask that you guys give us 60 days to put together a conversation with these folks to ensure that we can make this man whole. As a veteran, I think it's important that we support this man. And I would like for this body to give us 60 days to bring help to this man.
I'm going to go back to my motion. I'm going to ask to defer it for 30 days and we'll get an update in 30 days, James. And then if we need some more time, I'll be willing to give that as well. But I just want to get an update in 30 days to see where we are with it, okay?
Okay.
That's my motion.
Agreed.
Okay, I think Officer Jackson wanted to say something. Am I right about that?
I just wanted to give you guys a little bit more background, maybe to help you understand what's going on down there. He's been living without the running water since, I think, 2015 was when I first got this case. He is using the bathroom outside in buckets. I'm not sure when those pictures of the inside were taken, but he has a wood burning stove inside the home. No electricity the last time I was there, which was just a couple of weeks ago. He has a daughter that we've reached out to in the past. And I would love someone to help him, but I just wanted to let you guys know that I'm not sure how much of that help he is willing to take. He's on a fixed income, but that money's gone pretty quick at the beginning of each month. And it's not because he's paying his water bill or his electric bill. So I just wanted to let you guys know that it's been going on for years and I've tried to work with him for years. I've tried to send him to his daughter's house, have her come help, and he's just been really reluctant to take me up on any of that help. So I just wanted you guys to know that.
Jessica, how old is he?
Oh, I can't say for certain, but I want to say probably in his 70s.
He indicated tonight that he's 70 years old.
Yes, that's what I thought.
But I have some concern about him living there and the weather's about to get cold and he don't have any electricity, no water?
Right, he uses that wood burning fireplace. Now, there was at one point back in 2018, as I'm looking back through my notes, where he was staying with a friend and she was helping him get VA benefits. And they were trying to find someone to fix the house, but that did not last long. And before I knew it, he was back in the home. And nothing has been done. He says that those pipes froze one year and he's never been able to have them replaced since.
Wow. I'd like to interject. Excuse me, but I'd like to interject that we have a veteran-owned company that has moved into the city. Has invested tens of millions of dollars and most likely can and will support this gentleman. Please give me, Jimmy, I'll agree with you, 30 days. I'll be in contact with them. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to get some help for this person.
Like Jessica said, he might not take any, but I appreciate your help, James. I really do. But my motion still to just to put it off 30 days and that's it until we get an update on it.
Okay. If I could interject, so for 30 days, that would be on November 3rd would be our council meeting would be the next, would be the council meeting. This is the 30 days. That is election night. So I just wanted to confirm that is the night you want it back on the agenda.
I'm fine with that unless we're not.
We already have another one deferred for 30 days unless they want to go back. That would be on the four, item four.
I'm fine with that.
November 3rd. It's not actually 30 days. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, that's good for me, Senator. Thanks.
Agreed. We're deferred November 3rd, my motion.
Item six is also deferred to the third. So we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? We do need to recognize the attendees and see if there's anyone who wishes to speak. Mr. Hinchell?
Yes, if anyone would like to speak on this issue, please use the raise your hand function by mousing over the bottom of your screen. I don't see anyone who's on a cell phone, but now's the time to raise your hand if you'd like to speak.
All right.
Okay.
Saying no one who indicates they wish to speak, I will ask Ms. Kitchell to call the roll, please, for the vote. To defer for 30 days.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell. Councilman Hayes. Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Thank you. It's approved to defer that for 30 days. I would mention, because hopefully we will have some people who will see this on Facebook or are watching it online. I think all six of these dangerous buildings probably represent some challenging and very sad situations. I really appreciate Mr. Fenton's offer to try and get some people together to help the person who's actually living in one of these homes. But I would encourage the public to, you know, look around and see how you might be able to help your neighbors before their homes get in this kind of condition. And also, if you happen to know any of the heirs to some of the deceased owners or anyone who might be associated with any of the properties that we've been unsuccessful in reaching, have them call us and let us know who they are. And because we don't want to put liens on people's property, we don't want to decrease the value. And we want to give them an opportunity to improve it if they have, if they have the ability to do that. So I just want to offer that because I really do hate it when we have to look at these dangerous buildings. But we have to do it. We have to do it because we don't want people getting hurt and we want to improve things where we can. So with that, move on to item number 10, which is second reading on ordinance 02009-43. And Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance amending Galton Municipal Code, Chapter 5, Buildings and Building Regulations. Hold on, you said number 10. It's number nine that I need to back up and read, Mayor.
You're right. I am so sorry.
Skip nine.
Thank you.
This is a second reading of ordinance number 02009-40. This is an ordinance appropriating $127,769 for Project Wool Hall for the International Building Services. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Fennell, a second by Councilwoman Love, and opening the floor for any discussion. And there is none. So Ms. Kitchell, if you would call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Second reading on ordinance 02009-40 passes unanimously. Going now to second reading on ordinance 02009-43. And Councilman Fennell, now you can read this one. Sorry about that.
That's okay. All right. Now, this is the ordinance amending Galton Municipal Code, Chapter 5, Buildings and Building Regulations. Section 5-58, Amendments to International Building Code. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Fennell, a second by Councilman Alexander. Opening the floor for any discussion. Seeing no one indicating that they wish to discuss further, I will ask Ms. Kitchell to call the roll for the vote on ordinance 02009-43.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Okay, thank you. Second reading on ordinance 02009-43 is approved unanimously. Item 11 is first reading on ordinance 02009-44. Councilman Overton, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance amending Galton Municipal Code, Chapter 5, Buildings and Building Regulation, and Chapter 9, Fire Protection and Prevention, and I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander. Opening the floor for any discussion.
Is this about the scraper systems as far as the square footage of the buildings?
Mr. Stewart, do you want to discuss this, please?
Now, this is about removing the planning region from our ordinances because the county's taking the planning region away.
Okay, I'm all right.
How the county a couple of months ago passed that they had control over their region, and so there's no sense in us having.
Okay.
That's the same thing. And I'm sorry, Mr. McCord, I should have called on you. I think he's here. Yeah, he's here. Sorry. Anyone else? All right. This is first reading on ordinance 02009-44. Ms. Kitchell, if you'll call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Thank you. Ordinance 02009-44 passes unanimously on first reading. Item number 12 is first reading on ordinance 02009-45. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an appropriating and correcting environmental service revenue for fiscal year 2021. Be it ordained by the City of Galton, Tennessee, that the sum of $40,000 is hereby appropriated to 125-34112. And be it further ordained by the City of Galton, Tennessee, that this ordinance shall take effect from and after its final passage. Public welfare requiring such, and I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Alexander, a second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion on this? Saying no, Ms. Kitchell, I want to ask that you call the roll for first reading on ordinance 02009-45.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Passes unanimously. Item 13 is first reading on ordinance 02009-46. Councilman Fann is recognized.
This is ordinance number, thank you, Mayor, 02009-46, an ordinance appropriating $5,048.45 for legal services.
This is ordinance numbers, thank you, Mayor, zero two zero zero nine dash four six, an ordinance appropriating five thousand forty two dollars and forty five cents for legal services. I so move.
Second.
And a motion by Councilman Fan was the second by Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Holding either one.
Okay, Councilman Alexander. Without any discussion. Okay, this is first reading on ordinance oh two zero zero nine dash forty six. Ms. Kitchell can call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor seven eyes zero nays.
Thank you very much. Ordinance oh two zero zero nine dash forty six passes first reading. That concludes the regular agenda this evening and moves us now to other business. I do have several things, but I'll ask if this council has anything they'd like to bring forward first.
Yes, Mayor, could we put on agenda next week uh discussion about Clive Park?
About what? I'm sorry?
Clive Park.
Okay, that's um, does anybody need to prepare anything for it? Is there a certain?
No, no, I just have some things that I want to discuss about uh, yeah, I want to bring before the council about uh maybe some thing that we we should can do or should do.
Okay. All right. Um, and I'd welcome any discussion from you prior to then too in case.
Oh, I will. I intend.
Get ready for that. Anybody else have anything?
I do, Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Flood?
Hi, um, I'd like to mention uh David Gregory will be retiring in the near future. His last day will be January fifteenth. Um, I'd like the council to know that I've been establishing a committee and working on that. Uh, this position will be posted internally as well as external for our search.
Okay. Ms. Flood, thank you for that. I actually was going to bring this. Uh, that was one of my things to bring up to the council as well. Um, because I wanted to do it a bit more fanfare. I wanted to say that, you know, a very special man to the city of Gallatin had a birthday last Monday. And he's decided that that's the age at which he's going to take retirement. And so we're going to be very sad to see David Gregory go, but we do have to um plan for his succession because he's built. Quite the successful utility and we know um that it's very, very strong and thriving and we want to keep it on that path going forward, both um. I have respect for his legacy and for the um sustainability of our and well being of our city. So. Um, I kind of wanted to get feedback from this council as to how you want to move forward. I mean, I don't think it's any secret that there is an assistant superintendent of Gallatin Public Utilities that is potentially interested in this position. And I didn't know if this council had feelings about how they would like to move forward about whether.
I got one comment if I may.
Certainly.
I I would love before we move forward to have the opportunity this week for me to meet with Mr. Gregory. And Mr. Kellogg, as far as that's concerned, I would just like to have a discussion with him before I decide which way I want to go. So I would just ask. Could we put this on hold until maybe the next committee meeting? And give anybody else an opportunity that wants to talk to Mr. Gregory or to Mr. Kellogg, an opportunity to speak with them before we move forward.
I like I I like that idea, Mr. Overton. Um, I have had many conversations with both of them, but I think it would be a great idea if the rest of this council would take the opportunity to um. I don't know, I guess, do an ad hoc, oh, you know, uh unofficial interview with um both of them just to kind of get the current status and maybe what Mr. Gregory wants for the future and then maybe what. The assistant has in his mind that he'd like to see happen with the future.
I just love.
Um, how how does this council feel about that?
We still have to make it uh fair and 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 just legal. So we, you know, we can recommend anybody, but we have to open it up to anyone to apply for it, will we not?
Um, well, I was trying to recall, if you will recall, um, we have hired, I know in my time here, we did hire our public works director who was an internal candidate that expressed interest. And this council, and I don't know if we just suddenly opened it internally and he was the only internal candidate, or if he was just someone that this council felt great about and decided to move forward with. So.
And John D, I don't know. I may want to go outside and do other stuff too, but I just like to have an opportunity to meet with those two and discuss with them and just, you know, talk to them for a little bit, see.
Well, I'm sure Mr. Kellogg could take the ball running, but I just want to make sure that we keep it open and fair to everyone.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, and and to your point, Councilman Alexander, I I wouldn't actually see any harm in us opening it at least internally then, right?
No, just open it, period. Internal, external, any kind of term.
Yeah, my uh the the opportunity that I see is that the quicker that we can transition. Um, the more opportunity there is for stabilization before the January departure. Um. Ms. Flood, can you, how do we typically do the internal applications and then the external? Because usually we open one first and then the other if there's no internal applicants that fill the bill.
We we had a resolution that passed in August of twenty fifteen and they run together. So we would put a posting up internally as well as start the external um search.
Okay, so that's how we would do it. So what what um Councilman Alexander, Councilman Overton, I've heard from you all, anyone else want to weigh in at this point or?
The the only thing that I'd like to say, I I did talk to Mr. Gregory today and I talked to Mr. Kellogg also today. Um, in a business like that, there's a lot of mechanical issues and stuff and knowing where lines are or how something is made or how something, et cetera. Um, you know, my opinion here is is that Mr. Kellogg has had his finger on that pole for a long time and he pretty much knows. Not a lot of things are done or handled in the city. Uh, and I'm not saying that uh uh we shouldn't go out and look for somebody else, but I I think. As far as a candidate goes, I think he knows more about the workings of this department than anybody else, you know, that we that we've got or anybody else could even possibly come in.
Are we not required to advertise it?
Miss McCollie or Miss Flood, do you all want to weigh in on that?
At this point, we need to follow the the resolution that we have done in August of twenty fifteen. Do you agree, Susan?
I do, and I'll be happy to. I know that uh Amy Martin in my office emailed that to Ms. Flood this morning and I will email that to um all of council tonight or in the morning.
If that's what we are are bound by, which I didn't understand if that's what we were when we had earlier discussions, then certainly, but I say we go ahead and do begin that, right? Council agree here on that?
Yes.
I'll I'll still have a conversation with him, but I'm okay.
Absolutely, yeah. All right.
Okay.
Anyone else want to say anything before we move on to the next item?
Will they go through the interview process?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I mean, if we do, if we do um um the postings and we have a committee that reviews candidates, then yes, it wouldn't be right not to include, not to have an interview process.
But I think what I think what Ms. Flood's saying is there'll be a committee that'll take the applications and and get it down to like we did before, five candidates or something, and then we interview those and we'll we'll decide who we hire after we interview those. Is that correct, Ms. Flood?
Yes, like you've done it in the past.
Mm-hmm.
Just like we did with Ms. Flood, come on board.
Yes, same process.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I I was, I guess, just confused because of the public works hiring because it was not done that way and that's why I thought we.
This process came into effect after that hiring?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, I appreciate that and I'm glad y'all keep up with the 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 dates and the laws that govern us. That's why you're here and that's why we depend on you and I appreciate that. Is there anyone else from the council that has anything this evening? I have two more items. Okay, um, next item that I would bring to all of you is that this is October sixth. This is the date through which we said that we were definitely going to meet electronically. We do have allowance via the governor's EOs to continue meeting electronically through the end of October. However, this um body needs to make the decision if if that is what they desire to do. Um, we can certainly return to meeting in person if you want to. Um, or we can, you know, if you choose to. Stay electronic, we can do that as well. Um, I do want to be clear because I've had the question offline. Um, there really is not an opportunity to seem without a production studio, there really is not an opportunity to merge the two options. And we either need to be in person or we need to be um virtual. I will say if we can meet in person, we will certainly go to extra efforts to accommodate. Anyone who wishes to attend in person. I can see a scenario by which people can submit their comments. Um, prior to the meeting, either in writing or say they want to in video and we could share them that way um prior to the meeting. Um, if they didn't want to attend in person and if they went to attend in person but not stay in chambers, we could certainly have them wait in other areas of the building so that they're not. Um, they they don't have to be around other people if they're not comfortable.
I said it's just at the end of the month and then first of November, we go back live and go back to in-person meetings.
If everything stays, if everything's good.
Right, we got to play by ear.
That's correct.
Yeah, play by ear.
That's that's what I recommend.
Okay.
I mean, if you do it in person. We're going to have to go through extra expense and everything to separate all of us and everything like that. It's going, I mean, it's just going to cost extra money to do that.
Well, we are prepared for meeting in person. I mean, um, MacGyver, as I affectionately call Mr. Satterfield, has. Um, actually constructed some partitions so that people could sit in our assigned seats and have some barriers between us. Um, they're not pretty, but they do the job. And like I said, we could make accommodations certainly for the public. Um. I would probably ask our department heads to only attend if they had something on the agenda, just to keep them separated. Um, but but anyway, Councilman Overton, I'm going to ask if that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hayes. Okay.
Yes.
Have a motion, second. I would invite anyone else to discuss if they so desire.
I'm sorry, wh- what was the motion? I apologize.
Extended through October.
Okay.
And we start back live meetings in November if everything stays like it is now.
We'll bring it up again end of October.
Well, it it also will depend on the governors.
The governors, I would have to extend.
Right.
All right. So motion, second. Any further discussion from anyone?
This helps me a little because uh as far as I know, I'll be out of town next next week, so I would be more likely to be able to do it electronically.
Okay, Ms. Kitchell, I'm going to ask that you call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Fine.
I'm sorry, did you say abstain?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell. Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six eyes, zero nays, and one abstention.
Okay, um, so we will continue our meetings electronically through the end of this month and um we will publicize that accordingly and make sure that the public is aware. Um, the final thing that I just want to make you all aware of is you may or may not have been following the CARES Act money that comes down to the states that's been been distributed to. Um, the cities and counties. Um, Rachel Nichols and Suzanne Geerholdt have been staying on top of that um for our city. This latest group of funds actually had some requirements on it that are changing, but um like I said, they're staying on top of it. And we had a discussion today and I asked that um we just kind of bring you guys up to speed with what it is that we're going to be submitting for um reimbursement. There's parameters around this about it being COVID related and it has to be things that we can have in place by the thirty first of December, so we're kind of limited in what we can do. But essentially, what we are getting is money from the state that. Demonstrate a use for related to COVID um mitigation or prevention or 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 treatment, if so be. And um so Ms. Nichols, if you're on the line, I'm going to let you speak to that a bit.
I'm here.
There you are.
All right. Um, yes, the state has changed the parameters um as recently as last week. As to what we can do, we were going down one line thinking that's how we had to spend these monies and then they've changed it. We can actually use any police, fire, EMS, um, even if we don't have that, but we can use any of their salaries and benefits. To claim these dollars. There's a little over six hundred and six thousand dollars available for the city of Gallatin. And we can claim that money with just police and fire salaries. But we would like to also use those funds to purchase a cardboard baler because the amount of recycling has increased greatly due to COVID. We would also like to purchase a new glass crusher that handles a larger volume of um glass. Again, we've had larger numbers. Um, from Mr. uh Wilkinson's report, more people are at home, they're doing more recycling, they're working from home. So instead of their trash being at their workplace in Nashville, their trash is at their home. So we're having more of those. We have looked at replacing all of the water fountains because of the potential for germ and contamination. With water bottle refilling stations and those are no touch, so they would be more sanitary. Um. We're looking at purchasing some additional AV items for the council chambers. That would make it easier for the public to speak without being present in the room with y'all. Currently, as our AV is set up in the council chambers, the microphones and the speakers wouldn't work. There would be feedback issues. And so we're looking at upgrading that system, which would allow um ease for the public to not be in the room with you, but still be able to speak to you, possibly from the lobby. Or downstairs lobby. Um, these are some of the items that we're looking at um potentially using that six hundred and six thousand on. So we just wanted to let you know about those things.
Kind of question, does those sound good? Is there uh, has there been any kind of requests from fire or police for any personal protection devices or equipment?
I think they've pretty much been buying that kind of stuff all along because that's been vitally essential. Um, and so what we're trying to look for is things that we can invest in that will help us long term that are also COVID related. Um. Yeah, there is, there's some other reimbursement funds that we've been using for PPE reimbursement and some other expenses that have been filed through various other funds coming down, but this is kind of. Thing that they're looking for you to either invest. It's a way to get some money back to the communities. And so we want to be able to use it in some things that are going to help us during this time, but also in the future.
Right.
And if anybody thinks of any other things that we might ought to consider, we should. Problem is, is they have to be in place by the thirty first of December of this year and we have to submit for them very soon. Like, I think we've got to submit something next week.
We have one deadline this Friday and then the first of November is another deadline.
So we have to have everything final by the first of November. So we're open to what, you know, what makes sense, but we. Uh, certainly want to um get all of that money for purposes that can benefit our community. Don't want to leave any money on the table.
So you have to ask for something specific at the, by the end of next week?
No, we have to do our first submission by the end of next week, our final submission by the first of November.
So what do you need from the council? A blessing now or what?
Uh, I don't know. I mean, but. Not often that we get money raining down that we just um, you know, submitting a list for. Um.
Rachel, you don't need anything from us right now, do you?
Sounds like we just need for our tells how you're going to use it.
Yeah.
Well.
What do you need from us, Ms. Rachel, to get the ball going?
Nothing.
Yeah, I think once we get approval from the state, we will obviously need you to allocate those funds appropriately, but between now and then, I think not.
We're asking no money.
I think we, I I think with the state changing the rules, as as Rachel was mentioning, we may still have a little bit of flexibility because of that allowance for salaries. Um, potentially, we could use some money for salaries that would create up other money that could be used for determinations that we might not have um recognized yet.
Great job.
That makes sense.
We like that money. We like free money.
Yes, we absolutely. Yes, we absolutely do. So. All right. There's one other tidbit of good news that I wanted to share, but I can't even remember what it was. I'll save it, save it for next time. Um, so no one else with any other, um, concerns this evening?
I, I have one thing I owe me, ma'am, I, I apologize.
Okay.
Put it in my phone so I could remember, cause you know, I just moved over from a flip top, so it's taken.
Oh, wow!
Know y'all proud of me. But on last, last Wednesday, uh, you know, you, you see all this stuff on TV and they always talking about, uh, Black Life Matters and, uh, Daniel with police and, and the thing. There was the incident that occurred in front of my house on last Wednesday about, uh, six, six-thirty in the afternoon, where this police officer stopped this young black guy. And, uh, he approached the, the car and next thing I know, they was out there laughing, you know? And, and the guy gave him a ticket or whatever, but I, I say all that to say this, we are blessed here in Gallatin to have, uh, the police department that we have that can deal with the situation. And I went over to the officer personally myself and I didn't identify who I was. I just told him how much I appreciate the way he handled that case. And I, I never felt so proud of being a Gallatin black man, uh, to have the relationship with the police department that we have here in Gallatin. So hats off to you guys, thank you so much. I think his car number was six, seven, eight, I believe. But, but I, I appreciate that more, you know?
It's good to hear.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Alexander, that warms my heart. And, um, Chief Fandy just gave you a thumbs up, so he's thanking you too.
It brought tears to my eyes, but you see all this stuff on TV, you know, it's just, so I'm just glad Gallatin not in that category.
Well, it's so, you know, whenever we can find good and focus on it and bring people's attention to us, I, I think it helps us. It helps us with what's going around, uh, going on around the country and, and this has not been an easy year for anybody. So thanks, good news, that's better than any news I would have had for you. So thank you, Councilman Alexander. Um, with that, I'm gonna move on to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. And that means, um, Mr. Hinchell, I'm gonna turn it over for you to give instructions again on how people can participate in public recognition on non-agenda-related items.
Very good, now's the time in which you would press the raise your hand button by putting, mousing over the bottom of your screen if you're using a desktop, using an app, there'll be a button for that. Um, we don't currently have any phone callers, but if you join us by phone in the next few seconds, you will do star nine to raise your hand. And we do have three people already who've indicated they'd like to speak. We'll start with, uh, Mr. Jovance, go ahead.
Evening all. Um, just, uh, gonna start by reading something out of the minutes you all approved. Uh, we say Councilman Fennell stated he was aware of the signs ordinance that are minutes of the council, nine fifteen twenty. Um, now let's get back to business. Um, I got a picture for, from a concerned citizen about a sign, um, ten days ago across the civic center in, um, city property in a municipal park. So I call, I contacted Josh King, had planning, asking him about what were the rules about putting signs, political signs on city property? And his answer was basically, uh, out of chapter two, article one, division one, section two, seven dash B. An official or employee may not use or authorize the use of municipal time, facilities, equipment, or supplies for private gain or advantage to any private person or entity except as authorized by legitimate contract or lease that is determined by the city council to be in the best interest of the city. Blasting campaign signs on city property will be for the purpose of gaining votes or an advantage for a candidate and will be prohibited under the Gallatin Code of Ethics sit in a previous sentence. So I sent a couple of emails to the candidate in question, asking him to remove his signs. Um, and as of today, the sign is still there, accompanied now by the sign of a second candidate for the same seat. So, um, we are dealing with an ethics issue. So I would like, uh, the ethic officer to start an investigation, uh, because following what the city stated means a violation of the Ethic Code of the City. And I would like the city to remove these signs as soon as practical, probably tomorrow morning. Um, I think the mayor, uh, a couple of council ago saying that, you know, staff need to be fair, so I'm asking you to do the right thing, so it's fair. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Rosemary Bates? Just raised your hand, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff, I appreciate it. I wanted to thank the mayor and Jeff and Jasmine Grimm and the Economic Development Agency on behalf of all of our local manufacturers, which is at 70-plus at this time. Uh, the mayor announced on Friday with a live Facebook, uh, post that we were honoring the manufacturers with a proclamation. And during the month of October, Jasmine and Jeff have worked diligently recording videos of our, some of our, many of our local manufacturers. So there will be multiple videos over the month of October. Also, there is a compilation video that is already posted that I know they spent a great deal of time on. So if you're out and about and you're not familiar with who our local manufacturers are and the thousands of jobs that they contribute to our community and how valuable they are to our tax base. If you see them posting online, you go to their, their Facebook page or their website, just give them a shout out, please. We'll be, um, again, showing you videos of different locations through the course of October. They are one of the reasons that we actually survived the pandemic as well as we did with the increased sales taxes that we achieved. And, uh, again, we could not do that without the support of the council, all the infrastructure and the department heads who work with these manufacturers. And again, just remember October is manufacturing month. Um, and we appreciate all your support and your continued efforts to keep Gallatin, um, successful and growing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Renee Saunders, go ahead.
Hi, this is Renee Saunders, 2092 Rodman Boulevard. I was wanting to make, uh, just a brief, I don't think this is an agenda item, but if I'm wrong, you should stop me. Uh, regarding the, um, funds that are available, uh, from the, I guess, from the state or from the federal government for COVID-19 relief. I would hope that, um, with the plans that you all have, that you help the most number of citizens as possible um, in this, in our city. And I was a bit concerned hearing that you all thought it was a great idea to use the funds to pay, um, first responders that already, uh, get paid, um, from city funds. Um, I know that the children are back in school, although I don't have school-aged children. Um, if the children are back in school, maybe a way to make sure that they are safe and that their teachers are safe. Um, might be a better way to handle the money that you all call free money coming from the state. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else who's raised their hand to speak.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Hinchell. Ms. Saunders, I will address what you said. Um, there are parameters, uh, what we were saying was that the state is allowing salaries to be covered. Um, but we said that we weren't going to use it for that because, um, it's already covered in our budget, um, and by our tax dollars. Schools are not somewhere we would be allowed to use it because we don't have, um, city schools. Those are county entities, um, but, um, you know, we're trying to follow the parameters that they give us and, um, we're not planning to use it for salaries. What you may have understood was I said that we have the opportunity to submit for the salaries, which would give us some leeway in being able to spend that money on other needs for the city. So I just wanted to clarify that. Also, I want to thank Rosemary Bates tremendously because she did what I should have done at the beginning of the meeting. Um, Jeff and I are doing pretty well in the mayor's office, but Angela has been out and we are missing some things. But we did do this proclamation last week and I won't read you the whole proclamation, but I certainly, um, want to read you a couple of things that I think you should know because it's very meaningful because manufacturing is absolutely, um, a savior for the city of Gallatin. Right now in Gallatin, we have jobs where so many places in this country do not have any jobs and lots of people out of work. Right now, we have a lot of people looking to hire. We also are going to weather this pandemic and the economic impact far better than cities that do not have the diversity that we have that is provided by our manufacturing community. But here's just a couple of things for you to think of. Um, about 2025, more than 75,000 baby boom era workers are going to retire in the state of Tennessee. Manufacturing contributes four trillion to the US economy. For every dollar spent in manufacturing adds another dollar eighty-nine to the economy. Manufacturing jobs account for 8.6% of the US workforce. And where, um, manufacturers in the US perform more than three-quarters of all private sector research and development, um, driving more innovation than any other sector. And you wouldn't necessarily think about that. Um, certainly in the city of Gallatin, we appreciate, we support, um, our manufacturers. We are so grateful and so appreciative of them. Um, they have brought so much to our community, it is so much of our, our past, um, our present, and it's going to be a big part of our future. The purpose of Manufacturing Day is actually to communicate, um, the, the, the career options that are so new and different in manufacturing for the next generation so that they will be compelled to examine what opportunities are there and hopefully be interested in pursuing some of these careers because they're very good careers. And they are often, um, pursued through some alternative to your traditional four-year university. That's why the TCATs have become so popular in our area. And so, um, we're hoping to make people aware of manufacturing. Jasmine and Jeff, I had nothing to do with it, but Jasmine and Jeff have put together a series of great videos about the manufacturing and the industry in the city of Gallatin. You will find them interesting. It, um, there are things being produced in, in our city that you didn't know. And there, and it's being produced in ways that will really be, um, amazing to you. So check out those videos on working Gallatin and support our manufacturers. And the people that you know work in manufacturer, manufacturing and the people that run those companies, tell them thanks, tell them you're glad they're here. And, um, let's look forward to their growth in the future because it's gonna be very, very important. I did think of the thing that I wanted to share with you all, um, also along the line of funds. Um, you may recall that in 15, I think, we were granted funds for a C-MAC grant, Non-congestion Mitigation Air Quality Grant. We have not been able to use those. The federal government eliminated the Buy American waivers, which were required to fulfill, um, the grant requests that we had. We were, have not essentially been awarded that money. The state of Tennessee is allowing, what they're calling next week, a mini-call for those cities that receive those grants that could not be, could not be fulfilled because of the waivers, um, lack of availability for several years now. And they are going to allow us to submit for projects again, just those that were denied this opportunity once they were granted. And, um, we're going to be able to submit new projects for that same amount of money. And so we are, I've been working with our city engineer and our public works director on what we might submit for that opportunity. So we, we have several things that can meet that congestion mitigation, air quality, um, purpose, and we will be submitting for that. Um, next week is just the preliminary call for them to let us know how it's going to be happening. But this is a request that actually came from the city of Gallatin, so we're very, very excited that they're going to move forward with doing this for us and the other cities who have been impacted. So I thought that was another bit of news you could use, not as good as John D.'s, but nonetheless. With that, if no one else has anything, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
By Councilwoman Love, a second by Councilman Fennell, I think. All in favor, say aye. Everyone have a lovely evening, stay well, everyone, um, stay safe. I hope you can find some happiness and joy. Good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Sean D.
Yes, sir.